We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Steve Ayers from Lifeline Connect. Embellification, please.
Let's pray. Lord, I thank you for today. I thank you for the men and women that are here that continue to serve our village. Lord, I pray that you give them wisdom and guidance. I pray for their families and I pray that you keep them safe. I pray that you just work in their lives. And, Lord, I pray that they're leaders that you have called them to be. Lord, again, we just thank you and we praise you. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Here.
Swan.
Here.
Bridgeway.
Here.
Klepper.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
Okay, need approval of the June 15th council amendments?
I had a couple on there. Said Solicitor for Essex was present for the meeting. You weren't here.
Not at the last one, no.
Yeah. He should've been absent. And wasn't that Jerry Hayes that talked about the Molly Valley planning, not Dennis Miller?
Yes, the mayor already got me on that.
Okay. Those are the only two corrections I see.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as noted.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Oh, shit.
Klepper.
Yes.
Bridgeway.
Yes.
Swan.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Okay, approve all the bills. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Cron Leaving Company for free charges?
We had this ship an auger motor.
Wow.
The, I see the bill for hot shot trucking for the parking lot stone. Are we still waiting on an invoice for Savages?
It should be there too.
Is it on there?
It's on the second page.
Can I just down further? 6535.
One from the bottom. Page two.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, sorry about that.
Any other questions? Or obtain a motion to accept the bills?
Hey, I'll approve the bills and get them paid.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Beverly.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
Bridgeway.
Yes.
Swan.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Fay, you're up.
I'm up.
You're up. Come to the podium, please, if you would.
I'm here to question what we ought to do to make up an ordinance for the cat population in Hicksville. We seem to have an abundance of cats. We're right off the creek on Denon Drive. I see them laying out behind Hometown Pizza. You know, they're just all over. When you look out in the middle of the night, they're running up and down the streets. I have to have a license for my dog, so I don't really see why we shouldn't have to license cats and make the owners keep responsibility for them. I just don't know how to approach that, so we do that note.
Any comments for Fay or anyone?
Well, I think she's right.
There's a lot of cats that are out there that don't have an owner, though.
Right, yeah. That's a big problem.
But if you licensed them, those people would take care of theirs. And the ones that aren't licensed could be grabbed whole tub and taken down to the adoption center and...
I don't think they'll take them.
Cats?
I've called them.
It's a lot harder to catch a cat than a dog.
Could that happen anyway?
Yeah.
Well, I guess what's stopping the license? I mean, couldn't you go grab it?
It's, currently, it is against the law to trap a cat.
It is.
Yes. Yes, you cannot, you can't do anything to them. The way the laws are stated right now, you can't do, I mean, they're just, they're there and tough if you don't like it.
I spoke with animal control, it's probably been about a year ago, but then when the mayor called, she said she didn't recall our conversation, so, may have been a different lady, but she told me that you cannot trap a cat, you can't injure a cat, you can't, basically, if they're laying in your backyard, that's their home. So, they told me at the time that Hicksville had contributed some money to them and then did not follow through with their obligation to get the ordinance going.
They did. They did.
And I questioned her on that.
She questioned, he questioned her, and I don't, excuse me, Mike, but I don't get the Hicksville papers, so the only way I would know that information is if she told me that information, so that's why she told me. She also told me she could come and trap them, take them there, fix them, bring them back. And I said, "Well, that's the problem. I don't want the cats in my yard." And she said, "Well, there's nothing you can do because that is their home." So, now the problem is that people are feeding the cats, and I'm sure of some of the owners in our neighborhood that have the cats. So now we have coons in the backyard, so...
Got any groundhogs?
No, I got groundhogs. I've had a duck in the fireplace. Yes.
Yeah, I got skunks. I call my wife the skunk whisperer because when we catch one in a trap, she throws a blanket over it.
Are you allowed to trap a skunk?
I hope so. I miss my wife. She was like pulled away.
So, I don't care who has the cats or if they keep them in their house, you know, but they're using our landscaping as a litter box. I mean, Larry's been in that neighborhood many times. The cats run rampant all over and I always say, "It looks like a Children of the Corn coming out of the creek by the morning."
I'd match a cat for cat at my house.
There's a lot of them around Hicksville.
There's, there's a herd of them. And they keep corralled over there on Smith Street.
Right.
And then when the dust comes in, then that whole herd comes over on the other side of the street. And they've got the gene pool completely depleted. There's cats over there that's got ears on the end of their tail and stuff, and there's some really strange cats over there. Yeah. And it seriously needs looked at. I mean, there's, a lot of those cats are so sick and matted eyes and snotty noses and then they want to come up and rub on your leg and...
One of the owners told me that their cat just doesn't like to be in the house in the summertime. Well, I've seen it at 30 below zero and the cat's crying outside the door. To me, that's not humane for any animal, let alone cats that have owners or don't have owners, so, I mean, if you have a cat and you want to take care of it, you want to keep it in your house or put it out in your yard where it can be contained, that's fine. I have to keep my dog on a leash, so...
I think a lot of these cats, we had talked to friends of Feliens and over the years, that's where we adopted our cat from, and they have just such an overflow of people trying to bring them cats.
They can only take so many, and they have vets that come in and help spade and neuter.
Same thing with the humane shelter. We just adopted a dog and we were talking about cats and different things, and I knew somebody in town that had two strays and he was, well, it's a lot less expensive if you take them there to spade and neuter, but they had such an overflow, it would say you're going to be out a couple months, either that or if you take them, they take them to Toledo and things. It's a lot less expensive, and I think that's what the program was for, is to help pay, offset the cost for the vets to do that service. But it's catching the cats.
From what I hear, Brian and Defiance, those places have ordinances, and if the cat's caught out of the yard or whatever, the humane shelter comes and takes them and...
I don't think he owns it. That's true. That's true. Yeah. I know it's not in defiance.
Do they have an ordinance over there?
No.
Well, Kent, Kent, I mean, everything that we've talked about, and we have talked about this before, there was a Fox was here and complained.
Even many years ago, I remember we talked about that.
Yeah. And the way that the laws and ordinances exist currently, there's nothing we can do. But we sat at this table with the ability to change that. And through our legal counsel, could you find us an avenue that we could use to somehow can help control this, if not abolish it?
Yeah, I mean, we could look into it, like you said, the licensing aspect may keep people, keep their own cats under control, but it doesn't necessarily give you authority to go scoop up the other ones and whatever. I mean, nobody will take them is the problem. Maybe one thing, if you said, "Hey, these don't have an owner, they're not licensed, we're going to scoop them up and there's a shelter that'll take them" or whatever, that'd be great, but obviously, that's an option.
I would think the biggest option you're going to have to look at, even if you pass it, what are you going to do with the cat when you take it?
Right, right. What are you going to do with it?
You can't legally take it out and just let it go.
Nope.
That's abandoning an animal.
Right.
Well, some of these, and I do joke around a lot, but some of those cats that come around over by me really are very sick.
Well, I would doubt it.
And gene pool depleted. Their life would be far greater euthanized than what they're, I mean, their eyes are matted shut almost and snotty noses. It's, it's, it's bad.
When does it become a health issue for the community? I mean, obviously, the cat population is going to increase. It's not under control. So when does it become a health issue?
When you can absolutely prove that the cat population is responsible for a serious viable threat to communities.
They eat my rabbits.
True.
I had bunny rabbits in my woodpile and they say, "Gah."
If it's by cats, you're not going to be able to get to health department.
You can be pragmatic about it and hit the areas that they're around the most like hometown. It's disgusting. I remember picking Jack up from CCD last year and we were driving by and he's like, "Oh, mommy, pull around again." There we counted 23 cats out front.
It was off night.
So if you can hit those areas that are in the hometown, if they're feeding them and they're encouraging, then that might be able to make...
So, the council want Troy to look into it? Do you want the ordinance committee to look into it?
I want Troy to because he can give us the legal way to hopefully eliminate.
Well, that's all fine, you get an ordinance in place, but you still got to figure out if you can take, you still have the problem, we can, you can have any ordinance in the world, if it's not enforceable, then...
You're going to catch them? You're going to hire somebody to go catch them?
Transport them to the...
And transport them.
They won't come and pick them up.
Get that trailer out.
If you catch a dog in Hicksville that's not licensed and has no owner, what do you do with them?
The dog, we'll take it to our police department or the dog warden will come and transport it.
There's not a cat warden.
But there's a, you know, state of Ohio has no laws on cats, period.
We need to set a precedence. We could be, they might even make a movie.
Okay, so Troy's going to look into it. Appreciate you coming, Fay.
Thank you.
It's a serious problem.
Oh, Bob!
I have a question. Did you say that the shelter says that Hicksville went through with their commitment on the cats? Because you guys didn't.
You paid the other half.
You paid.
We didn't say that, right. But she said that.
She told me that, but then she told Ron, whoever Ron talked to, said she did not tell me that, but...
And she never asked?
I never heard any of this stuff until she told me.
And she never asked us to do an ordinance or pass anything like that?
No.
She asked us to help pay so much upfront and then the other half, we voted no to pay the other half, and Bob paid out of his own pocket the other half.
She just told me that Hicksville let them down by not fulfilling their obligation, so if they're going to do anything, they have to have an ordinance here in town.
But you don't remember who you were talking to?
No. I talked to 15 different places.
I called, I talked to Fay a couple days ago, and she don't remember that conversation, so...
How can they not remember fish don't eat?
It might have been.
Well, we were kind of holding back and seeing if it was something that is going to be used, because the residents now have to pick the cats up, the stray cats.
Yeah, that was my complaint.
And take them to the humane shelter.
For so many money that they're not helping to assist us.
But if the residents aren't picking them up and helping get the cats to the humane shelter and get them spayed and neutered.
Well, you can't pick them up because she told me it's against the law to trap them.
No, you just go over to catch them.
Can't use an ax.
Use a trap.
Those small traps really like it when you pet them.
Exactly. Well, I just want you to know that now they're mating out there because we can hear them screaming all night long, unless that's...
Stan.
Stan, I was going to say, you're saying...
You might want to edit that out, Bill.
Okay, thanks, Fay, for bringing that.
Thank you.
Problem.
Thank you.
Of course, we know about it, but just to bring it out, thanks. Okay, the board and commissions, planning commission met June 25th. They had a lot split application submitted by Jennifer Gamble, and they split .045 acres from Lot 54 located Edrichson's First Edition, and the address was 105 West Arthur. And it did, the committee did okay that. Park Board. Is anybody here?
I have a...
Oh, yeah, Lindsey.
I have a question for that, Ron.
Okay.
Says here, "The Froggy Park Adventure Alley restrooms are closed, using porta-pots for now. Why?"
That question's for me?
Okay.
We discussed that at our last park board meeting, and it's ludicrous, but the rules right now are that public restrooms have to be cleaned and sanitized once an hour.
Uh-huh.
Porta-pots don't have to.
Well, those are kind of self-cleaning, I've noticed.
Yeah, right? So it's just one of those silly things that doesn't make sense, but Val and Gary, they don't have the capabilities to, there's only two of them and they...
I agree. I just, I didn't know why they were...
That's a good question because we were all shaking our heads at that, too, so...
Yeah. Thank you for the answer.
Ron's going to volunteer to go down and say...
Okay, so, the first thing is I see some people from Eagles here, and they gave, the Eagles gave a $200 monetary donation to the park board. We want to sincerely thank you for that.
That was in Women's Auxiliary, by the way.
What's that?
The Women's Auxiliary was the one.
Okay, the Women's Auxiliary, okay.
Yes.
I didn't know that. I just had it text me. We had a leak in the pool that's been fixed. Seems like there's a leak every year. And most of the last...
After you opened?
After it was opened.
What was in the park that?
I don't know that. Val just texted me and said, "Tell them there's a leak in the pool," but it's been taken care of.
It was going down about that much a day.
Well, was it leaking inside of the pit or?
No.
Liner.
Liner. About this long. Guy went underneath and fixed it, and I guess it's holding water now.
It's holding water.
Cool.
Another thing we want to bring up, the park board is all unanimous on this over the last three meetings, so we're going to throw it over to the council. When I became a park board member, I put it out there on social media and also to family members, what are realistic goals that you would like to see at the park? Things that could change, wants, needs, and of course, I got all these crazy things, but the number one thing that was mentioned over and over and over again was if we could take down the play equipment by the softball fields that McDonald had donated, I think, maybe a decade ago or so. And I think there's good reason for it. It's disgusting. These are things that have been found in it. Used condoms, diapers, urine, fecal matter, blood, spit, just anything gross that you can think of that you want your child crawling around in has been found in there. And once again, Val and Gary, they can't get up there and go make that thing every day. It's just, it's just not going to happen. So, the park board's unanimous that we think it, the thing that needs to come down now, if somebody wants to donate more equipment, that'd be great, but what we're leaning is to make it a community space, either turn it over to the beautification committee or a community garden, or where the slab is, put a small picnic table there, people can meet from book clubs, and you can do photo shoots, you can just, it can still be a nice community space that isn't disgusting. So, but I'll leave that.
You don't, you don't think by closing up that one that it won't just move to Froggy Park?
It's more on how it's structured, Eric.
Okay. There's cameras over there, too. I know.
But no, it's, I'm talking about how it's structured.
Right, I know they have a lot of vandalism.
It's a tube system.
It's so much enclosed.
It's all closed.
Froggy Park has enough traffic that it's not an issue.
Middle-aged and elderly people can't get it, and it's small for smaller kids or small adults, and it's, it's just, it's disgusting.
We've talked about that for years.
Have you? And I'm just saying that that's the number one thing that people have mentioned is, I want to let my child in there, but...
What about the swing set and the slide that's there?
The swing set's no longer there.
Oh, it isn't?
The slide, I think, has been there since 1856. It's time to come.
I do remember when it was put in.
What would you do if this was put in there?
That's a good question, and to be honest with you, I haven't looked into that. I know that we, I have some volunteers that said they would help take it apart.
A couple weeks ago.
What we do with it afterwards, how much it would cost.
Could you sell it?
Honestly, I don't know. I don't know if, I don't know the legalities behind that. Can you sell something that has been donated? Did we sign a piece of paper that was saying?
It's not even on our property. It's not park board or village property.
So, that's the other question.
That's Petro Palton Park Board property on this side of the park.
Yeah.
Right, so that's the other question.
If it turned into a rain garden or anything like that, you'd have to have their approval, not ours.
Defiance County.
I'm going to tell him, come get your stuff, huh?
And last time, did they just recently take down the swing set inside that fenced area? It was there a couple weeks ago.
Maybe it is there, and I'm having a mental moment.
I was there two weeks ago.
Okay, well, it's there there.
I can personally vouch, like, we won't let Jack play over there.
I won't let my Jack play there.
I've crawled up in there before and it's, yeah, it's disgusting. I've found all of those things that Lindsey mentioned, so... Well, that's, that equipment's standalone.
Yeah, swing set's separate from that.
As far as your concerns of Froggy Park moving it over that way, that's a much higher trafficked area. A lot of people just avoid that little area for all of those reasons.
Well, can we...
It could be made so nice, though. Like you said, a community garden or a bunch of flowers and a picnic, it could be, it's trash right now. It could be made really...
With what she said, what you said and no, what you said and no, and what you said and no, could we give Lindsey and the park board permission to investigate whether they can be sold, give back to Defiance County Metro?
That was given back from Jerry Lewis, from Van Works, Jerry Lewis.
From McDonald's.
From McDonald's.
But I mean, if, if, if Defiance Group owns that property and owns where it's sitting, it would be very respectful for us to contact them.
Right.
Well, you guys run past them, they redo the dugouts, pass them?
No. Okay, let's get her tore down.
Well...
Thank you.
Larry arranged this, the whole donation, because my guys had to go down and help pile it up and put it together and all that stuff. You didn't involve the Defiance?
I think it was well-intentioned.
Tell them anything at all.
And the equipment being held in a small restaurant capacity where you have hourly workers that can go in there and clean it, not just knock the gates, so...
I think we're on agreement to take it down.
The blessings, go ahead and take it down.
Thank you.
Decide what to put in there.
Park Board can go ahead.
Or one avenue you might want to look at before you dismantle and take it all down, either get some pictures or advertise it for sale or free to...
Try and sell it on Gov. Deals. Yeah.
What's that?
It's not going to bring much, but the, we sell stuff through internet auction from time to time and are authorized to do that. They have playground equipment on there. I've got it on the site for just to see what...
And you can, you can sell it with the, with the new buyer taking it, down.
I will tell you that...
Really good idea.
They did that, our old elementary playground equipment, Chris Kemble bought it and it's still in existence over Hickory Acres Campground. It's right next to their main multi-purpose building, and they have all the old Hicksville playground equipment set on their site. So, and they bought it through auction, so...
And maybe some old campground might want it.
That's right.
Or we could do that, we could sell that auction and I'll, I'll auction it off for you for free. I'll be your auctioneer.
Troy, could you get me that information on, or some...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you just got to take some pictures of it and stuff, and that won't necessarily bring the highest value, but it gets rid of it. Yeah, it's getting rid of it. Somebody, I mean, I'm some...
I don't care if somebody gives me...
Get rid of it and they take it apart.
And they come and take, yeah, I mean, I don't, you probably do that. You advertise that way, can't you think? You ever seen it that way where they got to come and...
They got to be with or without the condom and everything else.
Keep the condom.
They can have those for free.
It's good if you wash them.
As is.
Mike has done vehicles off and Gov. Deals for us before.
Okay.
So, if you want to talk to him, if he wants to take the pictures of you guys or whatever, Mike Bailey.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we can probably set it up on there. I don't think it'll get anything.
They might get some. Get rid of it, it's good. Even all 10 bucks, they come over and...
And take it away.
Take it away and take it out themselves, that's worth it.
You'd have to figure out, yeah, do they come take it apart and haul it and all that? This deal was mine. I'll see you something during the morning.
Will you please? I'll leave you my contact information if you don't have, I don't know if you already have it or not.
So, any other questions for Lindsey or anything else you want to report on the park board?
The park looks beautiful. It looks really nice, so, that's it.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention. We'll see if we can get it taken care of.
Thank you for...
Other questions? Okay. Thank you. Okay, council committee reports, water and sewer, we just got...
Tonight, my fault, sorry. So, Barbara, should we add that real quick out on that side of Haywood Drive pertaining to the easement, if it's on the easement, if they were on our side of the easement or possibly on the other side of the easement? We had Tom Henry come out, he's going to do an easement survey to see if there are[1496.13]
We had Tom Henry come out, he's going to do an easement survey to see if there are and how many people are encroaching at the easement.
Is he going to do like a location survey where he puts the actual, what's encroaching and stuff?
Some people are actually still on our side and we think some are on the other side, but there's been a couple, maybe one instance where they had a, an agreement with zoning that they had put their building.
Oh, they got like a variance or something?
Right, a variance on that, but, so, Mike, our concerns was actually looking back at redoing the swell that was originally there. We definitely were hoping, we've talked many times about getting that property ready for sale, for a subdivision move in or somebody to buy that whole lot, but we want to make sure our easement is intact and we're okay to sell without any restrictions for future buyers. So we dealt with that, we had visited a local property about a ponding issue he had, he's got some erosion issues and he called again tonight, Mr. Bayshore, but we said we'd talk to him and look at some, we got a new storm line going in on Chicago Avenue and said maybe if it's overflowed and going there, if it's feasible, and maybe help, can't really help him on private property, it's all on him, but if we can direct him with some solutions, we would definitely do that as a committee and as a council, so, that's all I have on that.
Any questions for Mike?
Taylor, did, he had called me, did he get ahold of you, Bayshore?
Believe I was, might have actually supposed to owe him a call, but.
Yeah, like I said, he called me this evening, I texted Jeff real quick, he had mentioned it's about eight feet, that storm line's going to be eight feet.
Eight?
Eight.
Oh, contractors I'm talking to, they're saying ten is their cut, so six inches of aggregate and, and the pipe should lay at nine, nine-six on flow line.
Bottom of, I think bottom of pipe based on existing, it was eight feet to the bottom of pipe.
Eight?
Yeah.
I told my check with you guys tonight and let him know, so if you guys ever want to call him again, that's all I have on that.
Okay, any other questions for Mike?
Did you stop out there, Ron, to see what, you had mentioned that you were going to stop out and kind of shoot that?
I didn't, after the email from him, I just thought, we'll just wait and see. But if it's eight feet, it will be borderline to get him in, but what do we do with him, we can't do it. I mean, he would have to pay for it himself, and then we, he would have to get the easement through to do it himself. I don't agree 100% with my little buddy Kent, I think getting it out of just the combined sewer would be far greater than, you know.
Well, I don't care, as long as he doesn't take over what we're putting that storm line in for.
No, but we can, through a little calculation, we can, I mean, even if we have to tuck it down to a three inch or a four inch.
Yeah, if he slow feeds in, that's fine.
But I, and the only thing that, that bothers me about that situation down there, it's not like something that he went and dug and, and turned sour on him, the thing has been there long before I was ever born, I mean, that thing has a, has a history in this town. I can't, I can't say that we got to help him, but I think we ought to at least listen.
Oh, yeah, but.
Oh, yeah, but.
Put him up with some solutions and.
Well, I think you could put together a pretty simple cost benefit analysis of directing the overflow to the sewer versus directing it into the storm sewer, so what is the benefit of pulling that flow out? You've got to do the same study either way to figure out what flow you could release into the system, understanding that that, since that storm sewer wasn't designed for that, to take on that overflow capacity, but at the same token, is it, was it overdesigned at all to be able to handle that? So not only is there an elevation question, there's also the capacity question.
Correct.
So. We can certainly listen, but I think.
Yeah, I think it's worth a look.
There's going to be a cost to analyze that benefit.
Yeah.
I think that's something he could do.
Yes, he should do, his son could do it.
No, I.
From what they tell me, his son's a civil engineer or something.
I can't confirm that, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other reports, Council, there were none submitted, except, that's it, okay, Administrator's report.
I'll just start at the top, good opening for the West High Sewer and the Chicago Sewer, that whole blob is this Friday, the 10th, here again due to buggy issues or limiting who should be there.
We're very fortunate to have a lot of bidders on that.
Yeah.
And they're all looking at winter work, so hopefully it's going to be a lot cheaper than engineers estimate.
So, once I get the recommendation or whatever, I'll give it to Troy for legislation, there can, due to timing, it's probably going to have to be done as an emergency. I will, I can also scan you guys' results prior to the meeting, so you're not waiting to get everything that night. Reconstruction meeting for East Smith Street paving is tomorrow morning, and there again, we're limited, who's going to be there?
Who got that job?
API construction out of Laato. And then I'm going to bring out a lot of people upset, the North Tower, the good news is we got two of the three valves fixed today, we won't have to shut people off out that direction anymore. They should be back tomorrow to finish the third valve, and then at that point, and if all goes well, we'll fill the tower, then we have to take samples, so maybe by this time next week, the North Tower will be back up and running. I understand people have been very frustrated with the pressure, like it affects everybody sitting here too, so it's not like we have a special deal. But those valves all at the same time decided to conk out, so we couldn't do anything till we can get those fixed, and it's been a bear, unfortunately, we've had to have people out on the, call it the northwest part of town, or whatever direction Spencerville near the neck of the woods is. We're off, what, seven, eight hours a day, but that should be it.
Have we put in place a maintenance plan on these three valves that we're, that we're in the process of replacing, as far as future, you know, what's the lifespan of these valves, staggered replacement, anything like that to avoid these in the future?
I don't think we've gotten to that point yet.
Are we, are we planning on doing something like that?
I would have to ask water department what they're doing, these are all the originals, it's all those things nobody really thought about, but.
That's something that goes along with our asset management plan that we paid all that money into.
Well, yeah, that should have been part of it, I think I have to dig up.
We've got an auto, auto meter on and off machine that.
Well, that, I was asking about that, I guess I misunderstood, all that does is tell you the valve's turning, it doesn't mean it's open or shut, so he says, what's a per, what's that per? I mean, yeah, you can twist it, it moves, but you don't know if it's moving open or moving.
On the inside.
Right, but we have so many of them that, that you can't even turn.
Well, see, these, they were turning the last time, then they just happened to start leaking, because the last time we had to plant down, all three of them were working, well, that's been five years ago, but they were exercised last year if I understood right, so it's the perfect storm for things to go wrong with those three. But yeah, as far as when they go out and exercise here in a couple of weeks around town, for me, it's sort of a waste of time, but the EPA tells you you got to do it, but it's not telling you if they're working or not, so.
There, there's even an experienced guy like Troy or somebody, they can't feel a surge in that thing when they.
I haven't gotten this in the past 19 years, as far as, well, these, these, these ought to be getting done, we've replaced one, we do main lines, we're going to replace three over here later this summer. So now that's probably going to have to start taking priority over putting in new lines, having valves that can shut things off.
Okay, any other questions for Kent? Do you want to talk about the.
Yeah, that's just.
FYI, okay.
I have one, I have one thing for Kent, Kent, I definitely don't want to see you leave or anything, but I do have a question, you said before July or August, you're looking to possibly put something out there for.
Yeah, we're in July now.
Yeah, we're in July now, I had it marked on my calendar about double checking to make sure if you're wanting us to start looking for a replacement.
What do you want to bring that up for?
Because I don't want to, I want to be able to have all of his, not, he's never going to be able to train him on everything he knows, but it'd be nice to, for him to be able to train somebody.
And I have been talking, so.
I told you it was time. Well, it's time.
Just want to make sure we're not letting it slide by and all of a sudden you want to get out.
Is the water safe, to drink and everything?
Yeah, you might want to let it run a while, because it's going to have that foggy look.
Right.
It's just air that'll dissipate if you let it run a little.
Let it run and my water bill goes up, so I can't.
Run that long, but, but yeah, it's, it's safe.
I'm going to turn mine on halfway.
Yeah, right. Right. He's got a direct line.
No, but as far as what happened in the.
Turn to the tower.
And they tried to blow out the hydrants to get more air out of the system too, but it's, it's safe, I know people don't like seeing that, but if you let it sit just a little bit, it disappears fairly fast.
I guess jumping back to kind of what we were chatting about as far as long-term maintenance is, so we do have a plan in place that's documented about the asset, asset management plan?
That was part of it, but.
Yeah, I thought that took care of all that stuff, we talked about every component of water and EPA mandated, depending on the project, our cap off just design it.
Okay.
But if I can to account all our water lines, our valves, everything, and replacement costs.
Supposed to be a plan in place, you're like, when you should expect this, 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 or whatever, I haven't.
I have a copy of the plan in my office.
So there, there is a plan in place or there's supposed to be a plan in place?
The whole asset management.
Okay. And it goes into detail about which valves, when, and all?
Well, I don't know if it's got down to individual valves or not, like say the valve at the end of our street or whatever, I don't think it spells that out, I'll be honest, I haven't read that thing word for word either.
I guess, do we have documented anywhere the age of any of all of our valves throughout, throughout the village and no?
I guess the books, the water department's kept.
Very first valves in this town were put in by my dad in the 60s, before, before he put those valves in or was hired by the town to put those valves in, you shut the whole town down when there was a main break, and, and my dad put all of the original valves in everywhere. And, and then it's just been repaired or replaced as it came due.
As it's come due or as we've been required to due to a failure?
As it came due. Has one stopped when it failed and it failed. When it failed, we fixed it.
Fixed it.
So it's a reactive fan, it's not a proactive fan?
Right.
Not preventative maintenance.
Right.
Okay, any other questions?
I was going to say, if you want to know stuff like that, talk to Jesse or Troy.
I called Jesse.
They're going to know a lot more about that.
I called Jesse last week and said, are things going, are we getting back up online, and she said, it's just a hassle, this was just a one valve after another starting blowing, and she goes, it just happens, it's not likely, or like, we know that valve's 40 years old, we need to go buy a new one for it, I don't remember any time we've ever done that kind of thing, or we'll re-buy something.
Well, no, we've got valves in this town that everybody knows that they're, they're locked open.
Correct.
There's one or two that are locked closed.
That's just the way it is.
We have fixed them. Hopefully she's following that asset management, that's why we spent the money to design it and follow the plans and.
What are our checks in place to make sure that the asset management plan is being followed? Is that the water, sewer?
Yes, ma'am, that's what I would assume.
Is it the water, but who's holding them accountable, is it the Water Sewer Committee, is it Council, is it the Village Administrator, what's that, I guess what's that expectation?
It's obviously the Water Superintendent, it's her responsibility to know. Good question, so, anything else for Kent? Okay, Solicitors Report, you're up Troy.
Okay, first thing I have is Ordinance 2020-06, third reading by caption only and ordinance adopting section 922 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, setting forth rules and regulations regarding disposal of oil and grease in the sewer system.
Third reading, so entertain a motion to pass.
I'll make that motion to pass.
Second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Second. That's it?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Mitchway?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Everly?
Yes.
Then is a third and final reading of Ordinance 2020-07 by caption only and ordinance adopting chapter 924 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, setting forth rules and regulations regarding sewer usage in the village.
I have a question for you, Troy, on the section 924 of two, item two, isn't that an extremely large amount of gray area? I mean, it just looks to me like a guy could, could run some stuff down through that sewer and if and when he got caught, he'd just claim a whole lot of stupidity and, and not fully understanding the verbiage and, and the good Lord get him off.
I think the gray area is in our favor though, because it's generic enough that it's, you know, if it's discharged and it's detrimental to the sewer system, we could show how it's detrimental to the sewer system and say, hey, now you're on the hook for it, so I think if you're the guy, you got to be certain that it's not before you discharge anything. That puts the onus on them as opposed to us.
So you're the, you're the attorney, and if that's the way you feel, then that's wonderful.
Okay, that's a third reading, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Is this the one, I'm trying to scan here real quick, is this the one that dictates a 60-day testing period? As I'm trying to find here.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
That was the one that we just passed, actually, the user shall empty and service grease traps and interceptors as often as necessary, but in any event, no longer than 60 days. Item four, that would be, and C. That 60-day timeline, most, it's like the large ones, so the dealership for instance, ours typically is serviced twice a year.
Yeah, so same for the school.
Not 60 days, so, I mean, that just has to do with your capacity more, you know, more so than a frequency, so I guess I was kind of curious of where that 60 days is originating from.
Kent?
From the template.
Is the template that we were using to, I mean.
For a restaurant, can they go twice a year without?
No, for a restaurant, absolutely not, I mean, in every, the manufacturers recommend, or recommendations basically say that, you know, once it's a quarter full, it needs cleaned out, so I wondered as far as verbiage.
If you're real, if you got a real big one, takes you longer to get a quarter full than somebody that's got a smaller.
Correct, we're also not dumping grease down it.
Right.
Square everything's big.
So to dictate the 60 days for, for all grease interceptors, or does it make sense to say if you got, you need to abide by the manufacturer's recommendations of the, of the interceptor?
I guess I like it better at 60 days.
We might not know what the manufacturer is.
Well, you can contact Trussler Plumbing who, who goes around all the businesses around here and we're clients, and they say they recommend all schools twice a year. To pump it out.
Who does, Trussler does?
Trussler, they're, I mean, they're a septic, grease interceptor specialist, so they pump them out all the time.
Do you guys fry much?
No, none.
Wow, see this.
But, but this is going to say, now I'm going to have to pay four times for them to be pumped out. More than that. Six times, yeah, every 60 days, I'm going to have to pay every 60 days to have them come pump it out instead of twice a year.
I haven't found the 60 days, but I don't.
It's in four.
Number four.
Number four, the ordinance we passed. Second.
You may go, what you want.
Keep going, next page. Number four there.
I need to get one.
Right here.
Okay.
As often as necessary.
But no event, but in any.
But in any event, no longer than 60 days.
But in the next line, it says the village may require a schedule deemed necessary by the administrator, so does that cover it?
And I assume that's designed to cover people who need it more than.
Right.
More frequently than every 60 days.
It wouldn't cover if, if like, if the, if a dealership only needs it, actually doesn't even need it but once a year, but a bakery needs it every 30 days, is the.
You could argue that the village administrator, based upon information submitted to them, could require a specific schedule to be something not as intrusive as 60 days. And, I mean, the question then would be like it always is, are similarly situated people being treated similarly, so, or it's somebody who's a good corporate citizen isn't, isn't getting a better deal than somebody who's been a pain in the neck or something on, on that issue, it's not, you know, naming any names or anything.
At this point, the forms we're using are basically just food related, now later on, if Council wants to expand it to, obviously the Schmitz with the, with that stuff.
But then, yeah, I think you're getting into a case by case.
Right.
Adoption, then we're going to be passing legislation on a case by case basis.
That's why I like the blanket 60.
But above, so above on, in regards to what you were saying there, Kent, just above that number one says institutional cooking establishments, factories, grain mills, elevators, commercial garages, automobile washing stations, or other use as determined by the village, and that's also saying that any business that we deem as necessary, we're going to require within one year to install a grease trap. So.
Wouldn't those all by, probably state building code have to have one anyway?
They should, but, you know, I, I don't know as far as those classifications, does auto recyclers have a grease trap, does Rose Brock's garage have a grease trap, does, I'm sure any restaurants going to, because that's a frequent, that's a frequent discharge, or I guess frequent inspection.
We have one of the Eagles, I mean.
Yeah, the Eagles, if it's something that's going to get inspected regularly as far as a restaurant goes, yes, but the older businesses in town, I, I don't, I don't know that. So I guess what's going to dictate, are we going to go survey every, every business to see if we have interceptors installed?
Somebody would have to go inspect, or, or it doesn't make any difference whether that says 60 days or 980, if we don't inspect, it doesn't make any difference what it says.
Right.
Well, and, you know, most of your inspections happen by a third party anyway.
Yes.
Your inspections and your pumping, et cetera, so it's up to whoever that entity is to provide those inspections or that documentation that this, yeah, this, you know, whether it's keep records on site and then when the village administrators just stop sending, says, hey, let me see your inspections, is that what we want, or I guess what's the setup here?
What you guys are going to think about, I mean, you don't have to pass it to me.
Let's not. Yeah, we haven't did, yeah.
We haven't had roll call yet.
No, on the last one we did, yeah.
Last reading.
It's on the last one.
Were you having Jeff and Austin inspect?
Well, I figured it's going to have to be somebody connected here with the sewer department or out of mind or into things or who.
There's some records.
We have done this before, how do we back out of this, Troy?
Bill, Bill rewound about 10 minutes ago.
Rewind.
Double, double over it.
This isn't an emergency, so can it be changed during that referendum period?
Yeah, we got the 30 days, so we could bring something in the next one or two meetings that basically rescinds that one and.
But we decided on what we're going to.
Oh, sure, sure, well, we can still bring something to rescind it and pass that as an emergency to make sure it takes effect before the referendum period's up, and then come up with a solution.
I think we want to do that, don't we, Council?
Yeah.
Agreed.
So, I would agree to that, and then I guess as far as upending this or amending that, that verbiage, I guess I would propose that whoever that entity is that has those, needs to come up with documentation as far as documenting what type of, what's the capacity, what, what is your, and basically having on file some sort of frequency of inspection.
Could Council ask you this, because you are familiar with this and you know the verbiage? verbiage, could you come up with how you think it should be written?
I can certainly work on that.
It would be greatly appreciated and I know you, your past history will come up with something that's going to be fair and square to everybody so that we're not showing favoritism or looking like we're showing favoritism. So that would be wonderful.
So the first one passed, so we're going to let it go and then rescind it.
And then bringing something back to rescind it while they work on.
Okay, so then.
And then we'll bring a next one back after it's been rescinded and we got it figured out the way we want it.
Okay, so then.
Then we could always pass that.
Final reading 2020-07. We've had a first and a second, and we've had some discussion.
Do we want? We're going to let that lay until we straighten the first one.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, for now, or.
You've got to rescind your motion.
We don't have to vote yet, do we, on the second?
No.
Okay.
It's final reading.
It's the final reading, but was there a first and a second on it?
Yeah, there was.
Yeah.
They could be rescinded.
They could vote to rescind those and then just somebody make a motion to let it lie.
Me and Mike?
I think so.
I don't know who the two were.
With me.
Mike and Ron.
Then I move to rescind our.
Previous motion.
Previous motion. Our previous motion, I move to rescind our previous motion.
So we're going to let it lie, basically.
Well, you'd need to rescind the motion and then somebody should make a motion to let it lie.
Okay, I'll make a motion to let it lie.
No, wait. Rescind the previous motion first.
I'll second that motion.
There you go.
Okay, do we need roll call on that then, or not?
Nope. Sure.
Yeah, roll call, please.
You like laughing behind your mask, don't you?
No, I'm not laughing at all. I'm not laughing.
Juan.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Okay. Now somebody can make a motion to let.
Let it lie.
2020-07, let it lie.
I'll make a motion to let it lie.
Second.
I'll second. Ridgeway.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
The only other thing I'll say on that is there's a much simpler way that we can go after the people that are causing our grease problems. I'm fine with it. It doesn't have to be a word-piece novel, right? I'm not worried about, well, August Schmitz or Fort Worth Power or whatever, because know there's a few establishments that are creating problems, so if there's a simple thing that covers it all, that's not going to bother me at all.
Next, I have ordinance 2020-08, a first reading by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance. You do this right away, Cheryl?
Oh, yes. And I've already let him know it was coming.
Okay.
I believe we suspend the rules.
Second.
I'll second. Clipper.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
The second, third readings by caption only, ordinance 2020-08, ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance, declaring it an emergency.
Second, roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
And then ordinance 2020-09, first reading by caption only, an ordinance establishing the limited use of coronavirus relief funding and declaring it an emergency. And what this is, is, you know, that there's money that's been made available through the state to local municipalities and whatnot, but in order to be eligible for it, you have to certify that you acknowledge that it only pertains to expenditures directly related to dealing with the coronavirus and that you're not going to use it for any inappropriate purpose and it has to be certified to the auditor and to the state so to make us eligible for any of that funds, if there's any, anything that we could apply for and use it for.
I believe we suspend the rules.
Second.
I'll second.
Bassett.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Barth.
Yes.
Second, third readings, ordinance 2020-09 by caption only, ordinance establishing the limited use of coronavirus relief funding and declaring it an emergency.
Make a move.
Second.
Did you get that? Roll call.
Clipper.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Have anybody got any questions on the Two Bandits on that sidewalk, Troy?
Yeah.
So people kind of know what's next.
I got an individual license agreement that I'm working on finishing up that we'll enter into with them. And then the thought was, I think it Taylor's suggestion, that we would develop a more general framework that any business that wanted to do something similar, we would have it in place like a framework. If we get to that point, we still would enter into individual agreements with those people, but we would just have a policy or procedure we were following. So I guess in the meantime, if there were another business that wanted to take advantage of it, they could probably go the same path that Two Bandits did and say, hey, I know you guys are working on that in committee, but we'd really like to do this and it's important that we do it right away and we could address it. But then at some point, it would be nice that we'll have a plan in place and then we can just, when somebody is interested, go through our plan and enter those individual agreements. But yes, that is, and it'll specify, and again, if anybody's got direction or whatever, you know, path of how many, I mean, we should be specific about it instead of saying sufficient width or whatever to use for ingress and egress on the sidewalks and whatnot. And it basically says it's a revocable, I mean, it's a revocable license, so if they're not following the rules and that would apply to anybody, then we could revoke it and, you know, they wouldn't be able to do it anymore or whatever.
But the way you're set up now, if anybody, any other business uptown.
We'd have to do it on a case-by-case basis right now.
If somebody came tomorrow and said, Kent, I want to, we're going to have, it's going to be a nice weather.
We'd have to do an ordinance like we did, like the thing that was considered at the last meeting specifically for Two Bandits, we'd have to do one of those and do a specific.
Give it agreement. Unfortunately, I wasn't here at last meeting. I thought, I thought the original plan that we presented to you was everybody got to do it.
Ever, we said everybody would have the chance, but we were going to pass this real quick because Mark wanted to be able to order his tables and his equipment and everything. And then the committee or whoever would work on a more generalized plan for everybody else. And again, as I recall, it was Taylor's suggestion on that. And then we would have a more general plan in place that if anybody else in the future, whether it's a month from now or five years from now, we would know, okay, here's what we do if somebody wants to occupy a portion of the sidewalk in the downtown area, and this is the steps that we have to follow.
The thing that's.
But it will not, it still will not be like.
It won't be fast.
They can't come here and say, we'll still have to do a separate agreement. Now, by that time, obviously, we'll have a template of an agreement and maybe we just got to tweak it a little bit for the individual business. But they would still, there would still be a license agreement between the village and each individual business or owner that wanted to do that, whether that's two people or 20 people, whoever, if there's 20 out there. But that's the, that was my, what my notes reflected is do this one. And that's why I say is if in the meantime, there is somebody out there and they want to move and they want to hurry to do something, they could come to the council, just like Mark did, and say, hey, I'd really like to do this. I know you approved it for Two Bandits and you're working on that and you're working on another more general plan, but we don't want to wait until that plan's done, what do we need to do? And then we would take them through like we did Two Bandits.
Kent, what's the division on that concrete in front of each business uptown? How much is store-owned and how much is village-owned?
Four feet in front of the business, store-owned.
Four feet is store-owned?
That's nice. That's what we're going to.
When I started, yeah, I was. Handle outside the door was the owner, the other two, three, whatever it is under the curb. So that's four foot, six foot. I doubt they're six foot.
I believe as, as it was discussed, they were to maintain a six-foot walk path, as it was discussed.
My understanding was going to be in the middle, like they were going to have stuff out close to the curb and they're obviously were going to have this stuff that they currently have up close to their door, but then in the middle, there would be a path in there for people walking back and forth and, you know, not being interfered with as part of their business.
Okay, he's aware of that.
Yeah. No, it'll be done before then.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got one more. Did you guys ever find out about the Catholic Church?
Yeah, I emailed Greg.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. At the next meeting, we'll have an ordinance vacate in that alley. We just had to get the details down on what we needed to reserve our easement in. So last week sometime, I emailed him, he emailed back and said, that's fine, we just wanted to make sure we didn't need to do anything else, so.
Okay, any other questions for Troy?
Hate to bring this up, but do we, are we clear on the property, the ground out there and programs?
No. Kent and I talked about it a couple of times the last couple of days. I did get Kent's email. Here's my take on it, and I don't know, because I wasn't at the last meeting, what was all discussed. Here's, I guess if you want my opinion as to what should happen. Doesn't do any good to be in CRP because we don't get paid for it. So that, those contracts should be canceled and whatever the recoupment is per our contract with the Havers, and I've talked to Mark about it a couple of times, and he basically said not that she wants to pay any more than she has to, but he's told his mom that there may be something coming that they got to refund. And so he's just waiting to, for everything to get washed out. So that should be done. And then in Kent's suggestion, the other issue then is if we're not in CRP to qualify for the CAUV through the county, you either have to have it in CRP or you have to be, have something planted that you're farming. And so obviously, we got concerns about using fertilizers and chemicals and things like that. So I think the suggestion on that was to leave it in the CAUV and Kent had some generic discussion about what to do maybe in order to still qualify for the CAUV, but not be using chemicals and stuff because of the location near our future wells.
Why does it have to be in anything?
In order to get the preferred taxing, it has to be either in a, either in the CRP program or because you're getting the agricultural use valuation. So what it is, is assistance for people like farmers and stuff.
We got the agricultural tax rate at Industrial Park and we didn't do anything.
Yeah, we farmed it for years.
Farmed it, yeah.
So we sell off lots.
Right, right. So in this case, we either have to keep it in the CRP, which doesn't do us any good, we've already established, or we have to meet whatever their definition is of having a planted crop or whatever on it. And if we don't do either of those things, we won't qualify for the CAUV, which I'm not sure then, could we apply for it to be tax exempt because it's minutely owned?
Just the well field.
Just the well field, okay.
It's got to have a use.
Got to have a current use, right.
That's the same as on Industrial Park.
Right, right.
It's only the farm land taxes in.
What's the remainder of the CAUV, or CA, the CAUV?
CRP.
Well, what's the, what's the remainder of that contract?
The CAUV is not a specific contract, but if you take it out of CAUV, there is a recoupment, I believe it's of the last three years of what you saved in taxes by being in that program. And that applies whether you just take it out of there and don't do anything with it or when it usually happens is, you know, you got some farmer that's got his land in CAUV and he decides to sell a couple of lots off out front, then those come out, whatever tax savings, he got to say they're five acre lots, whatever tax savings he or she received on those particular lots over the last three years have to be paid back to the county, basically. There's a recoupment on that.
Is the, is the break that we're getting on the taxes, is it large enough to make it worth having somebody else tell us what we can do with our land and how we can do it?
That's a good question. That's a good question.
I'd really like to know.
Yeah, I mean, are we talking?
Are we saving thousands or hundreds?
Typically, CAUV is a substantial reduction off of the normal value of land. They reduce the value and then they tax you on the reduced value is what it is. So it's not like they're changing the tax. They're, they're taking land that might be, say, normally appraised at $100,000 and they're taxing you on like $20,000 or something. So it can be somewhat significant, but I don't know, in our case, with the acreage we have, are we talking seven or 800, are we talking 5,000?
I would really like to know that number.
I don't know that answer off the top of my head.
Because if it's not a substantial amount, I would say, hey.
And it probably, if we pull up the taxes on it, which I could do tomorrow, it usually tells the amount that they've reduced it to for CAUV purposes, so we could probably do the math back and figure out if it didn't have that reduced value because they got the tax rate and everything right in there and we just multiply it out and say, well, it's like they're saving X amount of money. That may be a little simplistic.
Would you do that for us tomorrow?
Yeah.
Well, that's where too, I think I sent that in an earlier email, Jill said, say if we would drop CAUV today.
Right.
That wouldn't show up until 2022.
Right.
Which means then the family we bought it from is not going to want to be paying that because we had loaned it three years already, so we'd be on the hook.
Well, no, that's why I included it. That's real common in contracts like that, real estate contracts where you might be changing the use of it or whatever. That's why I included it in there. Now, doesn't mean that we got to hold them to it, but that was included in there that if there was recoupment because the use was being changed, that the seller would pay the recoup.
Oh, they'd pay the, I'm sorry, they'd pay the CAUV and the.
And the CRP, it's both in there.
So the lady from Farm Agency, and this was just her looking at around and then she's.
Theirs is a lot, the CRP is a lot.
Around 35 grand.
Yeah, the CRP is a lot because you have to repay back, pay back everything you received, whether it's been two years or eight years or whatever, and I think it's only been three or four years they've been in that contract. But that, that is a lot more than what the CAUV recoupment would be.
Well, see, that's where too, if we were to leave it, we're kind of in a gray area, which was my email.
Right.
Let's just assume in a perfect world, say next year, if we would put the field out to hay, that qualifies for CAUV.
Right.
So you'd be getting the reduced taxes and you might make a few bucks.
But you don't have to fertilize or anything. You don't have to.
So I guess my question is, why are we even putting ourselves on a timeline as far as that contract has to go? Why don't we terminate that CAUV or Havers contract to have it in CAUV and then we can re-up that at any point in time?
The difference is, once it's out of CAUV, then like for the next year, we would be taxed at the normal rate and then that's when they'd also determine like what one-third of the recoupment is and that would be added on the taxes. So it's not like they tell you the figure right away and say, hey, the recoupment on[1628.45] this is going to be $6,700 or whatever. They wait and when the next tax cycle comes out, they'll put us at the regular tax because we don't have CAUV anymore, whatever we would owe, because that, that was a period of our ownership. And then they would add on a charge for one-third of the recoupment for that year. And the next year, they'd do the same in the next year and then the recoupment would be off, is the way they do it. So if there is a way to estimate, we, we probably could, what we could do is estimate what the recoupment would be using current tax figures. And there's a way of doing that. And then we could maybe talk to the seller that we bought it from and say, hey, we'd be satisfied. And if it's a little more than that or whatever, we're just going to have to pay it when the time comes around because it's so far out in the future, particularly since there's an estate involved in it now, you know, and they're not going to hold up an estate.
Using, using that after we find out what the, what the advantage to us would be as far as...
We, we could do that. I mean, we could rough, I think, I'll check, but I think I could rough that out. Yeah. Tomorrow, what the advantage is. But if that was our selection, I'm saying we don't have to wait the three years and every, whatever the taxes come out every December, November, whatever it is, and then go to the seller and say, okay, it looks like for this year, you owe us $1,300 or whatever. We could use the figures and try and estimate it on current figures, knowing that if the value of the land goes up a little bit or whatever, we maybe didn't get total recoupment, but we could negotiate it basically and say, we're willing to accept this just so we can have everything done and a clean cut. And then we'll go forward from there. And if it goes up a little bit or whatever, we're, we're just going to have to eat that and pay it.
Because we already sent in the CAUV to Jill and she was waiting on the contracts on the CRP. From CRP because we're claiming CRP to get CAUV. And my signature's on that, so I mean...
We'll get it straightened out.
Is the CRP coming to a halt? Is it, is it expired?
Yeah, that we need to get out of altogether.
That one we definitely do no matter.
Now, is that one I can just call Farm Service?
Correct.
Okay, I will do that one.
Okay.
I'll let you work out CAUV with Jill.
Okay.
And future or whatever. Because I know we're kind of in a, but no, I'll call Farm Service tomorrow and have them send whatever we need to do.
Yeah, they'll send like an agreement or whatever to terminate it.
Okay, good discussion. Anything else for Troy? Okay. Department heads, which chief, you're up.
So recommend that Ross Becker removed, be removed from probation. Did you get that today?
Yes, yeah, right here.
So, and then other than that, we fixed all of our lights in our one garage, took down the ones that were hanging there, not working, and Chris Taylor did that. So we spent less than $40 to fix them all, so.
He doing anything tomorrow? He's been out of line.
So he's just got a couple more things to finish up and then probably maybe towards the end of the year, we'll replace the ones in the other garage where the EMS base used to be, so. Other than that.
All the cruisers running okay? Morale up, all that good stuff. I know we had a problem with that one and we were in the shop a couple times, but...
So far, so good, so. I am going to probably consider, statewide Ford was down last, two weeks ago. And there's a way to sanitize your inside your cruiser, some type of device or programming they put in the computer, build a Ford has come up with, but only are the brand new cruiser that only qualifies for that because of the year, I guess, so. And they're willing to do it for $75. But I don't know what Schmitz or anybody, if they're even doing them, you know, Taylor?
I believe so.
So it's a, you, you leave it run for 15, 20 minutes or whatever and it puts out some type of air through the system and sanitizes it somehow, so. So I may have that done to the black one, so.
Okay, I'm going to recommend Ralston Becker be taken off probation.
I would get behind the mayor on that.
Second?
My second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Juan?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Anything else, chief?
So all you have, unless you guys have some...
Okay, thank you.
Chief, thanks.
Scott, fire chief?
I'd like to thank everyone that came out and supported us at our breakfast last weekend for playing the park. Fit pretty good. I have a, had an email from EMA office that the Ohio Department of Health in combination with Ohio State University is going to be doing what is called a coronavirus study. This is, is legitimate and is totally voluntarily. You can opt out if you want. The new squad is, had to be sent back to Braun to have some small modifications done to put the power load cot in. We have the load system, but not a cot yet. So we should have it back from Braun this week sometime. And we're trying to get Stryker to give us a loaner cot so we can get it in service pretty quick. That's about it.
Questions for Scott?
What was the first thing you said, COVID test? Yeah. Was that about? Coronavirus study. It is voluntary, it's legitimate, is voluntarily, so you can opt out if you don't want to do it. They may end up at your door, right? Yeah. That's what I thought, I read that. Yeah. They're going to send postcards out with the heads up that they may be coming to your door. I don't know if it's into our area of the state yet or not, but...
Doing door testing?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if they're going, I don't think they're going to test, are they?
It says followed by a letter asking about testing, so I don't know if you send the postcard back.
I thought the letter I read, they would actually come to your door and get a test just random, just to get an idea, the way I read it. Just today it came, right?
I got it last week. I don't know when the, when they're going to send out in our area, but they're doing the state in different...
People are supposed to have some type of ID.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They're supposed to have something for their cars to send, that way.
Just be careful, the scams out there.
Yeah.
And it's the...
They will select, just reading through this question. When the project team visits a home, they will select an adult at random from your household to participate. They'll ask some questions. Nurse will collect 15 milliliter blood. The blood will be tested for antibodies.
And this is also something you can tell them to get off your courts, right? Huh? It's theirs.
Sure. Voluntary. Yeah. Voluntary.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
So is it antibody test?
It's both a nasal swab and an antibody test. Do they, you know, if they look, is the town giving the blessings to come in or is this just they just... The governor's. Governor his. Governor's doing it. Yeah. They will let us know ahead of time, that way you can let people know. Yep. They'll be possibly knocking on your door and checking. My understanding.
What is the fate of the old retired ambulance, number three now?
We're not sure yet. We want to get the new one up and running and go from there. It may be August that we have a cot for it.
So the only reason you're saying you're not sure is because you're still running it?
Yes.
Okay.
And once we get the new one, we'll probably run it for a little bit longer so we can get issues fixed on the middle-aged ones. And once that's all up and running good, then we'll decide.
Okay, any other questions for Scott? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Park director, I think Lindsay pretty well touched on that. Cheryl, your report?
Okay, I have the fund status report. And if you notice, it has a note that it hasn't been reconciled since April. We're still doing our audit, and which will affect the numbers. And the auditors are currently on vacation, so they will be back shortly and continue with the audit. The, I have the reconciliation report for water, sewer and trash. And our income tax report, and it's coming up on July 15th and everyone is supposed to be knocking on our door, but so far, we haven't had a big rush or a lot of mail. So I don't know what's going to happen there. In June, we were 10% above last year, so that's pretty good. We have Julie's mayor's court report. And then I also put in this, it is as of May, the unemployment figures. Down on the bottom, I put down Ohio's 2019 for the last three months and 2020. And you can see it's horrible. And just to remind you, all these people on unemployment, it's not taxable. We don't get tax for all these people that are on unemployment. So just keep that in mind that when our normal is from 3.4 to 4 and it's up to 15.8, bad times are coming, just so I have that on the record because I'll be thinking of more ways to spend money, is all I can tell you, because it's not coming.
Well, that will affect next year's, obviously next year's income tax.
Yeah, seriously. Seriously. That's all I have, bad news.
Any questions for Cheryl?
This being my first year, I guess, when do we start talking about next year's budget?
Usually, the department heads start in July and then by September, I have to have it on paper. And then it goes to the finance committee.
Usually October you hit it hard.
Do we have an idea of what this shortfall is going to be? Obviously, it's still ongoing, but that 3.4 to 15.8% is pretty heavy.
Yes, it is.
So I guess as far as the fund status and all of that fund, fund goes, I guess, are we projecting, I guess, are we able to quantify what that shortfall is going to be and how that's going to affect our budget for next year?
This is unprecedented. I really don't know. The unemployment figures scare me because of not being able to even get our 1% of that. It's all just gone. And it will hit us next year bad. So I don't know.
Usually, Cheryl, by October, you have a number, a bunch is going to be available the next year by then.
All right.
That helps.
So what's the timeline on this CARES Act and the COVID, the COVID, the dollars allocated on the impact on local municipalities, I guess, as far as...
There's a nice little amount of money that is available, but luckily, we haven't had to spend money.
Right.
Correct.
That is approved.
And that's, I guess, what I was just looking at, so...
Trying to think of what would even be maybe police overtime or something if we had anything like that.
We've had people that have had, that have been off, that we've paid them anyway.
Yeah.
And, but we can't use that.
Right.
But if we're anticipating a shortfall for next year's taxes, does that qualify?
I don't use that.
No, no.
It's going to be what you paid for.
It's like the reimbursement for out-of-pocket stuff that you...
That was not...
Only budgeted.
That wasn't budgeted.
Exactly.
To, to cover COVID response, for lack of a better term.
There's around 90 grand if we can come up with bills to cover.
You're saying that 15% rate here on Hicksville?
Defiance County.
Because I don't know with that many people, it's not working.
I'm just... Yeah, well, I know.
Well, that's where too, as far as the budget. Normally, by this time, I've got my rough skeleton outline. I've not even looked much, but one thing, and you might not be able to tell without numbers, is raises affect what I put in my budget. And I guess can we call October this time around too? Usually know a little bit before then, if raises are going to be in there, what major projects council might want to see get done next year over and above what we already know, as far as the well field and Defiance Avenue sewer job.
Industrial Drive.
Yeah, that's, that's on the water tower you're planning for 2022, unless you shift it. So I mean, there are some things for big dollar amounts you might want to be thinking about if you want to move them up, move them back, because it's going to look good.
A lot of, a lot of that planning is going to be based on what funds will be available.
And I've not heard anything on when any of the applications are coming up. Still waiting here for when we're going to get our contract for the water line. So yeah, I mean, there's a lot of unknowns at this point.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Any other question for Cheryl?
Thought I could answer.
Okay. In my report, the COVID-19, just got a report, Defiance County's had 40 cases, which isn't bad since middle March.